Whenever you're ready.
Okay.
Roll call for the city council meeting of Wednesday, May 21st, 2014 at 7:30 PM. Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Brennan, Mrs. Harancunzo, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kotowski, Mr. Mersky, Mr. Winarski. All please rise for a moment of silent meditation and pledge of allegiance.
Mr. President, I ask that we remember those in our community that are less fortunate than we are during this time of prayer and silent meditation. Also ask that we remember those who have lost loved ones since the last time we were in these chambers. And finally, we ask our God and Creator to give us the wisdom and the proper information to make the best decisions for the citizens of the city of Erie.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, Mr. Mersky has a presentation to make.
At this time, I'd like to call up Bart Wood and John Hanoski. This past television season, there was a television program on AMC called Game of Arms. And Game of Arms, it was an arm wrestling show, and it featured Erie, Pennsylvania on the show, competing against teams from New York City, Sacramento, and much larger cities. And the Erie Wrecking Crew, Team Relentless, came out on top. So, I wanted to give them an award from city council because while they kind of made Erie look a little gritty and rough and tough, the true heart of the show were the people. And you represented Erie well. You showed our determination, you showed your, our grit, and you showed that we never give up. And for that, we thank you and we commend you. I want an award to you. These resolutions from council, it says, "Whereas the city of Erie wishes to pay special tribute to Team Relentless, Erie Wrecking Crew, who are featured on AMC's reality television program, Game of Arms. Whereas Game of Arms is the American television series that debuted February 25th, 2014 on AMC. The series is a reality television show about American competitive arm wrestlers and follows arm wrestling clubs from Erie, Pennsylvania, Kansas City, Missouri, New York City, New York, Sacramento, California, and Baton Rouge, Louisiana. Whereas the premiere was watched by 1 million viewers and is AMC's highest rated reality series premiere of all time. Whereas James Wagner, Dave Chaffee, Bart Wood, and John Hanoski, all of Erie, are featured on the program, representing Erie, Pennsylvania in competitive arm wrestling. Whereas Dave Chaffee, the team of the Erie team, was co-champion of the entire season. Therefore be it resolved by Erie City Council that this commendation is hereby presented to the Erie Wrecking Crew upon achieving the goals they set upon themselves with hard work and dedication, finishing their most successful season. Erie City Council extends our best wishes in all future seasons of competitive arm wrestling." Let's give them a round of applause.
Thank you, Eric.
Congrats. Good job, thanks.
Thank you. Hopefully, we get to represent us again.
Great. Good job, thank you.
My son's watching you on TV.
Oh, great. Thank you. Really appreciate it, this means a lot.
Thank you.
Quite all right, quite all right.
I was on the rathup in a moment. Can I elbow down for a second?
Don't want to miss anybody now.
Rose getting in on the action.
So much everybody.
Thank you.
Okay, motion to accept minutes for the meeting of May 7th and bills for payment on 5/16, 23rd, and 30th of 2014. Mr. Brennan, Mrs. Harancunzo, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kotowski, Mr. Mersky, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon.
Next on our agenda is a repository sales. Are there any repository sales? Are there any repository sales? Are there any repository sales? Hearing none, we go into citizens to be heard. First will be Mr. Gary Horton. Following Mr. Horton will be Mr. Randy Barnes.
Good evening, council.
Good evening.
My name is Gary Horton, 2046, East 19th Street, Erie, Pennsylvania. You have to excuse me this evening a little bit, I'm a little nervous. Kind of hard for you to believe, I understand. But I want to make comments this evening regarding what I see as a crisis in our community. I'm a little nervous because my intentions have been questioned all over the place by people about what I really want. And it's not only hurtful and insulting. I've born and raised in Erie, had a job since I've been 14. Fortunate enough in college to work for the Department of Health, Education, and Welfare in Washington, DC. Then fortunate enough to work for the Governor's Office, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, for three years in Harrisburg. And then to have the experience of my life to work as a special assistant to the mayor of my city for 10 years, to head an organization that I helped found, and to have worked in job training programs and public interest programs all my life, to have grown up in a family, or parents, my parents have fought for the betterment of our community and opportunity for others. And then to be accused that we're looking for something, anybody who knows, my family, my parents, my father and my mother, Howard and Mildred Horton, know that no one has ever given us anything that we didn't work for or earn ourselves. I'm here this evening because we have a crisis in our community, and it involves young people. And the county has, and others have come up with a solution that I don't believe goes far enough. If you look here, I brought almost 25, 30 young people here this evening, that's half of the jobs that the county is proposing for the city of Erie. Between now and June 10th, 15,000 school-aged children are going to be released in the city of Erie alone to already troubled streets, where we definitely have bad guys. And we, you know we have bad guys, we see the bank robberies, the home invasions, the heroin addiction, the assaults, the robberies. I mean, yes, we have bad guys in our community, and we need a police approach to them. And now we're getting ready to introduce 15,000 school-aged children to that mix, half of them working age, let's say you have 7,000, the 7,000, let's say half of that 7,000 really wants to work. We have about 50 jobs that we're waving before those 4,000 students. I'm here because I'm hoping that city council will look at the Community Development Block Grant Program and the mayor's recommendation, from what I understand to date, to put $500,000 in community policing. I'm asking you to take $100,000 of that $500,000 and not invest it in community policing, but invest it in community relations slash summer youth employment. I think we have to have a balanced approach. We've got to give these young people something to believe in, something to work towards, something to hope for. But for a summer job at the age of 14, where would I be? There are flaws in the program that is on the table. It is dependent upon the private sector. Okay, we'll take a few public dollars and train, give kids soft skills, and then hopefully the private sector will give them a job. This has to be a public sector program. It's the public sector that will benefit to clean up the filthy streets that we live in, the vacant lots, schoolyards, playgrounds. There's a lot of work, and now we do it on adult scale. We have a public force to pick up garbage and clean the streets and clean the parks, we just don't have enough manpower to do it so that it's all clean. To employ or put a program in place that will provide young people from 14 to 18 with an opportunity to do that in our community is needed. Now, there are people in the county who campaigned on bold leadership. I didn't see it for a county who is in a better financial situation than the city. 800,000 surplus, dollars, surplus in this year's budget. $14 million worth of gaming funds, drug and alcohol, children and youth.
Time's up, Mr. Horton.
And all of that. I'm here to plead this evening that the public sector invests in our youth for the summer by utilizing the Community Development Block Grant Fund in a manner which is, it's-
Mr. Horton, your time's up.
-to share that with the youth of our community. Thank you, God bless you, and have a nice evening.
Mr. Barnes is not present. Are there any other citizens to be heard? Are there any other citizens to be heard?
Good evening, council.
Good evening.
Steve Semocare, representing Eastside Eagles Neighborhood Watch. I just want to reinforce what Mr. Horton has so specifically addressed tonight. I've been here before on other issues that I believe have gone on deaf ears because there has not been an outcome of change. I referenced a stop sign. If we can't fix a stop sign, which is inappropriately placed once again at 10th and Wallace, I think that's not just shameful, but I don't think, using one of the words that I heard Councilman Jones use, wisdom. I challenge the wisdom of, who I believe are intelligent people who sit behind the deaths of this great officer here. But I challenge your wisdom to truly understand how critical this investment is beyond a stop sign. He referenced 15,000 youth coming out of schools. If we don't have a job program for them, I think each of us will have to bear some of that shameful responsibility. I was in Atlanta over this past week, and I got a chance to meet with some folks there who are going through some of the same things we are here in Erie. It's a universal issue. But I was very, very impressed with their leadership and their commitment and their boldness to make some decisions that is not always going to be popular. And one of the things I asked God to do for me was to give me a new boldness, to give me a new opportunity to stand for what is right, whether it's godly right. And that isn't going to always be popular, and I'm not concerned about popularity contests or even opinions. I'm concerned about the most important resource that we are responsible for, and that is our youth. We can always talk, and it sounds so glamorous when we say, "Youth are our future." Well, the future is now. The future is within the next couple of weeks, we're going to get some of those very youth that we want to see and build the leadership within them. And they deserve to have the same principal opportunity that some of us are privileged to have. But it's going to take wisdom, it's going to take boldness, it's going to take making a decision, you know, as maybe some of your constituents will not be in favor of. But sometimes we've got to go away from the grain in order to reach the real central value of what we're talking about. We're talking about saving innocent lives, believe it or not, giving them an opportunity not to make decisions that doesn't have wisdom and that does not cause pain and hardship to their families and to their communities. I have a young lady that's been here with me for three years in our Neighborhood Watch area, along with her son, Shay. She recognized one of her teachers from when she went to Wayne, Mr. Mersky. She's volunteered with us for three years, what are asking for, a dime, a single mother. And every time I ask her to do something with us in a neighborhood, like clean up the garbage, she and her sisters and brothers, they show up without compensation. She's deserving of that opportunity. She wants to be gainfully employed. She wants to be a responsible parent. And so does others that sit in this room and who are not here to represent themselves. As a member of a very important mission, which is the watch group, please, please consider this very, very important value issue. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Are there any other citizens to be heard? Are there any other citizens to be heard? Are there any other citizens to be heard? Hearing none, Rose.
Ordinance for final passage, an ordinance appropriating the sum of $13,619.31 from unappropriated and unanticipated revenue and providing for the expenditure thereof Fiery Equipment Reimbursement Program. By Mr. Mersky and seconded by Mr. Brennan, that council file ordinance, Bill Number 15872, now known as Official File Ordinance Number 182014, be finally passed by the city council. Mr. Brennan, Mrs. Harancunzo, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kotowski, Mr. Mersky, Mr. Winarski, Mr. One ordinance for first reading, an ordinance appropriating the sum of $34,000 from unappropriated and anticipated revenue and providing for the expenditure thereof Police Drug and Vice By Mr. Kotowski and seconded by Mr. Brennan, that council file ordinance, Number 15873, having been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by the city council. Mr. Brennan, Mrs. Harancunzo, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kotowski, Mr. Mersky, Mr. Winarski, Mr. And that takes us to contracts and purchase orders.
Mr. President, move the balance of the agenda.
It's been properly moved.
I'll second it, Mr. President.
Second. Hearing none.
Okay, voting on the balance of the agenda, Mr. Brennan, Mrs. Harancunzo, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kotowski, Mr. Mersky, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon. That takes us to committee reports, Mr. President.
We'll start with Councilwoman Kunzel.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a couple of things to report. First, the council members met with the Redevelopment Authority staff and the consultant who's working on the land bank initiative. And we had a good meeting and learned about the purpose of the land bank. And one of the things we talk about here a lot at council is blight removal. And a lot of times, we have people in here who are purchasing properties off of a repository sale, which means back taxes and things have been, liens have been forgiven, and they're getting those properties free of those prior debts. And we always expect and, we try to insist that the folks who are getting those properties free of the back taxes are going to make those a positive impact in the neighborhoods and remove the blight. And what we're learning from the Redevelopment Authority is often properties come through the tax sale or the sheriff's sale and not even repository sale, where they are actually getting those properties for small amounts, and then they actually don't remove the blight. They either put a tenant in a property that is an eyesore to a neighborhood, and they put a tenant in there, charge them rent, make some money off that tenant, and then they continue to not pay the taxes, and then that property becomes in arrears in taxes, and we haven't solved the issue of blight, although we have forgiven past tax debt, now they're accruing future, you know, present tax debt. So, the idea of the land bank is being thrown around as something that would be, not just in the city of Erie, but in other communities that it might help, would create an organization, the Land Bank Authority, that would be able to help to facilitate the rehabilitation of properties that come through either the judicial sale or repository sale, to get clear title and to get those properties in the hands of a developer who will be required to meet standards, to reinvest in that property, and remove the blight. So, I think we had really positive discussion, and we have, there is a consultant who is being paid through a grant, who is going to write up legislation and a proposal for us to look at and how we could do that. This would be sort of in keeping with the initiatives of working with the other governments around here. They talked a lot about other communities like Union City, Corey, that also have blight issues, that we may be all be able to work together and make this a wider land bank, not just the city of Erie. So, that should be coming, and we should be continuing to move forward on that initiative and get questions answered from the council as we go along. The other item is the combined water, or combined, I'm sorry, combined sewer and garbage billing. This is one of the initiatives we've been talking about in order to alleviate the delinquencies in the garbage, garbage refuse billing. So, we are moving forward, we did receive some documentation from Paul Voitek, from the Water Works who does the billing, and their agent on how they can make this happen. So, we continue to work on coming up with a strategy that we did hear that a lot of people have entered into payment plans, which is good. I mean, one of the things, that's one of the nice things the Water Works offers, is the opportunity for people who have, you know, a large amount that they're owing, that they can enter into a payment plan, and they can make that plan to be what it needs to be to fit into their budget. So, we don't want to be too hard on people and say, "You have to pay all this money upfront," but enter into a payment plan and start paying something. That's what we need you to do. So, hopefully, we'll be able to get some more traction and get things finalized in the next month or two. We also have had, I know Councilman Kotowski will report on the aggregate pension board and the performance of those funds. I serve as the chairwoman of the Water Reserve Investment Committee, where we also have funds invested so we can bring that money back into the city for capital improvements. We were able to bring money in in the last month or so. We bring 4% of our fund into the city every year to help with capital improvements, things like police cars and things that, you know, you don't necessarily have the regular money to pay for from our operating. So, we try to do that, and we were able to do that about a month ago, they did that. But our performance on our Water Reserve Fund is doing very well. We are very fortunate that we're able to have a very good advisor helping us to make sure those investments are wisely invested and that the managers are doing a good job, and we are fiduciaries of that money. So, we had a good report today, so. And that's my time, thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilman Kotowski.
Real quick report, I also met with the Erie Police Department Pension Fund and Erie Fire Department Pension Funds. They're both progressing well and doing very good. Today, we had a meeting with our consultant on the aggregate pension board investment committee, and we will be having our aggregate board meeting tomorrow, and I'll be able to report to council the results of that meeting. But as Mrs. Kunzel said, the fund is progressing very, very well. We're pleased with our new consultant, and as always, we're ready to make changes where changes are needed for the good of the fund. And finally, I met with the Erie Park and Authority this week, and I will be contacting each member about what we discussed at the last Park and Authority meeting, and things are progressing well with them, and be able to, I'm going to personally call each one of you this week. So, we'll get back next week with some good ideas. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. Very quickly, tomorrow, we will be having a study session with Brenda Samberg at 5:30 here on the Chris designation, the process of appointing an authority and creating an authority to be able to hopefully bring some reinvestment in economic development into the city of Erie. So, this is, we're again going to sit down with her, get more information, get more informed, become better prepared to be able to make proper decisions on how to move forward with this process. I'm not sure if this is against the rules or not, Mr. President, so you can flog me later if I get out of line, but I wanted to ask, Mr. Horton, I think you may have left, I put my glasses on. I had a question on what the $100,000, how many jobs that would create if somebody could grab him, or he can, or if someone knows, if you could come up to the mic, because we don't want to yell out if you don't know.
Very good.
Oh, okay. Mr. Horton, I just had a quick question, if you could come up, the $100,000 that you're requesting, how many jobs for, how many youth jobs does that equate to?
The Erie School District, I don't have a, again, I've been careful about offering a plan. I did put a plan in writing-
Right.
-for 700 jobs, 500 youth in the city, 200 youth in the county.
Right.
And I wasn't privy to the meetings that came up with the plan, but I, since that time, I met with the Erie School District, who said they can employ as many kids as they have funding for, playgrounds, schools. And I think a conversation with Dr. Adams could get you closer to an accurate number-
Okay.
-for them. But if you calculate without the overhead of who's administering the program, and the school district or the city could administer a program, because you already have supervision in place, you already have some of these same workforce initiatives in place, about $1,300 to $1,400 per kid for a six or seven week. And so, if you calculate that out, 1,300 or $1,400 a kid for six or seven weeks of work at the minimum wage, 30 hours a week, you'll get closer to a number-
Okay. All right.
-for the kids without any overhead.
All right, thank you. Appreciate that. Mr. President, that's my report for today.
Thank you. Councilman Mersky.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a few things to report from the Fire Department. It's getting to be that time of year where it's warmer outside and people are using their fire pits, and they wanted to share with you some of the restrictions that we do have on those fire pits. Those restrictions include only seasoned hardwood or charcoal can be used in them. You don't throw all your garbage in there, or any scraps, that kind of stuff. Seasoned hardwood or charcoal, and you must have a screen to cover the pit. The burning of other materials is prohibited, and it must be 15 feet from any structure and 15 feet from your property line or any combustible materials. And if you have, that's for a portable fire pit, a permanent fire pit that's built in, 25 feet from any structure, combustible material, or property line. And you must have a means to extinguish the fire pit on site, so either a hose or a fire extinguisher. Mr. Santone asked me to remind the citizens about that, so I'm putting that out there. Also, tomorrow, the Convention Center Authority meets. On the agenda is the design work for the hotel and parking garage that the county's funding, or guaranteeing the funding for. That's being designed by Kidder Walker, so that we look forward to that tomorrow. And just a few final notes, I wanted to thank everyone who went out yesterday and voted. Voter turnout was extremely low, especially in the city. So, those who did go out and did their civic duty, I appreciate it. It's very, our democracy only works when people participate, and when you have less than 20% of the people making 100% of the choices, your voice is your vote. So, please encourage everyone of voting age to get out there and exercise their right to vote. I know there weren't a lot of highly contested races, but every vote counts. And finally, thanks again to the Erie Wrecking Crew, Team Relentless, for coming in today and for putting Erie on the map. A million viewers, an episode is nothing to shake at, and like I said, their spirit, they're true champions, and so we're proud to have them represent Erie. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Councilman Brennan.
Thank you, Mr. President. Couple items on my list here. I attended the United Way of Erie County Annual Meeting this morning. It was a record year of fundraising, as was reported, $6.2 million. They talked about the many successful programs they've had this year and the initiatives and how they're helping to build a better community. So we need to keep continuing to support them and their efforts and the services they provide for our city and county. I wanted to just make one comment about the contract that we approved for the Anna Shelter today. I definitely support the contract for their work. They do a lot with the little bit of funding that we do provide for them, and I think they do a great job, and it's definitely needed service for the city. We talked about the, Mr. Jones talked about the upcoming study sessions. We also are going to be talking about the proposed demolition delay ordinance at 6:30. We have a 5:30 meeting to talk about the CRIS, and then 6:30 is the proposed demolition delay ordinance to discuss that. And lastly, our summer ethnic festivals are coming up. The season's coming up very soon here. The Troika Festival is this Friday through Sunday, and it's at the Church Nativity at 109 German. And lastly, Memorial Day is Monday, so let's all remember the men and women who died while serving the armed forces. Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Winarski.
Good evening, everyone. Very brief. Ms. Kunso did mention the land bank meeting we had with Kim Green. There's a lot of positives that were brought to the table with that, and I can't wait till we get this study, their research they have happened in the next three, four months. So we knew, we know as a city where we can move forward possibly on this. Will it solve all the blight problems? No, but it's a tool, as was mentioned, or a step in the right direction that can possibly help with the blight in the properties we have in town. Like I said, look forward to seeing where the research, how it ends up. I believe Kim said possibly by the end of July or August. Jessica?
I think August.
Okay, August. So we may have some more answers and some more input to see where the city can be a partner in this endeavor. Naturally, tomorrow night, we have the CRIS designation. We're having a little study session. Last time, I guess we didn't win on that one on a little bit of a technicality that wasn't quite shared 100% with us as a counselor, as an administration, and now they're talking about forming another authority for it. If that's the case, we'll work to get this handled to help our own developers in the city of Erie because it helps keep the tax dollars here. They'll waive the tax dollars and they'll keep it in our community. So if we have to bend over to do something to help the good of the community, that's what our job is. I know, I appreciate Mr. Horton's efforts with this summer program. I did do a little research on my own after this came out, and people got to realize the city has been a pretty big partner in this jobs program for many years. Even in this year's budget, we're going to have over $400,000 in our summer jobs programs, which in our budget, whether it be golf, whether it be the public works, there's part-time jobs out there and available. So I understand you got to go to the third floor and apply for them, but as a city or as an administration, we have in our budget monies every year. Our summer rec program this year alone, $307,000 we have allocated, which there again doesn't just go towards jobs, it goes a little bit beyond that, goes to the youth to have the basketball programs, the tennis programs, a lunch. Even a breakfast might be involved. I don't, I'm not positive on that, but there's, you're taking care of the younger, the youth, as well as giving the older kids responsibilities and a job to teach, train, you know, coach. So the city on their end is doing something. The last thing as a city or as a council, we want to leave anybody behind on this, but it's been in our budget for many of years that we are trying to do our fair share. Where this goes from tonight, we'll see, but just a footnote to know, we are trying as a city and as a council. Any other questions or concerns, please call myself or any of these council members. That's our job. That's our commitment. We may not get back to you today or the next day, but please bear with us. We'll do everything we can to get you an answer on any concern you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I don't have a report. We'll go to administration.
Just very quickly, I wanted everyone to know that the Summer Parks and Recreation Guide is ready to be rolled out. We are having a press conference tomorrow at 10:30. John Haran from the Housing Authority, representatives from the Erie YMCA, along with Highmark, Blue Cross, and Blue Shield will all be here. We couldn't put this program on without them. It's a $300,000 program, and we do receive funding from partners, you know, like the Housing Authority and like the Y who put on the Learn to Swim program and help provide opportunities for children, for the younger set of children and up until 18. Everybody is welcome to participate, and we certainly hope that they find something productive to do this summer. So tomorrow at 10:30, all of that information will be available, and I believe it has already gone home with students in the Erie School District. So thank you very much. Have a safe and happy Memorial Day weekend.
Thank you. Rose?
City Council, June 8, 14. Mr. Brennan, Mrs. Haran Kunso, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kowalski, Mr. Mersky, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon.